Saying his rule call, please.
Council President Schilling.
Here.
Council Adams.
Here.
Council Barrientos.
Here.
Council Collins.
Present.
Council Fitzgerald.
Here.
Council Shane.
Here.
Council Verden.
Here.
Councilors Briggs and Jants are excused.
Thank you. And the second thing on the agenda is the Economic and Community Development Department Annual Report, Part One. How many parts you gonna have? Just two?
And once Brian masters the technology, he'll be able to actually do it.
I don't think he's mastering. I think he's hacking. Oh, what a great photo.
Good evening. Here we are here. I did start off the year.
It's a good day.
Yes, it is.
Do it early.
As the name implies, this is the first of two parts to my important presentation to y'all. Because we're so diverse and are perfectly compliant in these parts. First part is the Code Services Planning and Historic Preservation. The general format is kind of where we're working to the economic development. This is the mission of the department. Really, the bottom line, in a more generic description, we facilitate safe, managed growth that supports the economic and social environment. So we cover these three topic areas. In this session, we cover building inspections, economic development. So here's kind of how the department's laid out. There are ten of us. And we also provide staffing support to actually five different commissions. Mining Commission, the Storage and Markets Commission. PEC, which is the Economic Development Commission, which also doubles as the South Dallas R and D. Vice Commission, and the downtown Urbanial Development Commission, commonly known as RDA. So here's some things that we accomplished this last year. Finally, I put in terms used there. We're underway with the mill site redevelopment plan, which is TGN grant project. TGN does transportation growth management. It's a grants program co-managed by ODOT and the Department of Labor. We finished kind of phase one of the local master plan, the mission project, which you all have seen multiple times before. We purchased the property at 791 Main Street, and salvage operations there. We wrapped that up in the spring. We closed out our 2022 ARPA Building Improvement Grant projects. We're about halfway through 2022. We launched the Dallas Business inventory project, and we signed new agreements with the Chamber of Commerce in East Florida. I would hope to hear from them in this session this quarter.
Question.
Yeah?
And maybe it's too early to ask this question, but what kind of response rate are you getting on the, on the?
Database rate?
Yes.
I think we have around 100,000 completed entries with game of races.
Oh, that's great.
I did preface this whole thing with, yeah, any detailed questions about what I'm presenting tonight, I may or may not be able to answer all of them.
Well, you got that one.
If I can't, I will get back. Continuing on with our accomplishments for the past year. We have applied now officially for our nomination for National Historic District downtown. We'll know up now. Talk about that actually later. We have onboard a RAREO December, which is the Resource Assistance for Rural Environments Community Development in Dallas Market Project. We've been going egg busting with our minor HULIS grant. I think we spent a lot of money on that program this year. We completed a business resource guide, both in print and online. And we are pretty much wrapping up the development of this, so we can find a lot more here. And we're preparing for our transportation system that we should be. So those are some of the things that we improved. So now we'll get into code services. This is a, this is a lot of visuals. I'll kind of go through this quickly because there's a lot of fun before and after, fun in front of the screen. It'd be like to see what work looks like before and after the services. So the year started off, you might remember a year ago, we had a lot of amazing people that brought their PD all through town. And our folks were being really busy baiting that graffiti. And it kind of went that way. So that's kept our, kept our folks busy chasing graffiti down all these different spots. We've got a handle on it. Ninety-nine cases have been annualized. You can see there's a good before, after, and a word that our folks still. So here's kind of how a graphic graph stands as far as numbers goes. In all of 2022, there are eighty-five cases. I don't know why we have the district issue. So this just talks about, we transitioned over to a new software platform this year. In fact, in last year, we finally included a little play of 2022. We've been hunting around for several years for a software platform that works and works for us. Both in this building as well as out in the field, probably not one that we can. The street plan has worked well, pretty well. As with any software platform, they're not perfect. For the second year in a row, we really were very proactive with the amendments in the early spring and throughout the spring and the summer. And no different this year, we got our team did a great job getting a, getting a good handle on that. Here's an example of some of the, maybe some of the more dangerous cases that we had. This slide kind of grabs out what your average resolution time is. It's one of the performance metrics that we're trying to track. We try to keep this down to as low as possible, as you can imagine, but times these, these cases take longer.
What's the, what's the vertical graph? Is that days?
Yes. And so this is your average resolution time, a number of days. So we try to keep under five, but we don't always get there. So the most we had, like in April was fifteen, and there was a lot of, probably a lot of we have been going out at that time. Before the end of the year, our cases kind of vanished a little bit. Didn't resolve. Our folks were really happy that we got some cases that have been lingering around since before they even came on staff. This is one of them that dates back to 2021. They finally were able to kind of close out of the books this year. This was a lot. Again, this is just some, some fun visuals of what we can see out there. This is a chronic nuisance case that's been out there since 2019. Just pretty. Close. When we stay connected with the property owner, you can see, you know, an improvement in these two slides from those.
Before you move on, can you let us know which of the chronic nuisance cases are rental properties and which are? Where the person who owns it lives there?
I don't know about you, but I don't have anything.
I know about the two that you're showing. The last one that you showed is owner occupied.
That's the word I was looking for. Thank you.
And the one you're showing next is also owner occupied.
Okay.
So another one, it's been here since 2019. Had a lot of small, I guess. Really a lot of the baby that deal with that is where it's. John. And as of last month, anyway, almost closed out of this one. Got a lot of chickens out there, lots of rabbits.
Charlie, can I add just a couple of comments to the chronic nuisance ones? So both those chronic nuisance cases had to go to the municipal court. And through court action, we were able to get those things closed out. I mean, it takes, takes a long time. We try to work with these property owners. I personally went to this house and filled up a twenty-yard dumpster full of stuff with some friends, just to help them get on their way. There's, these properties, it takes years for them to get to the condition that they're in when we find them. And sometimes it takes us a couple of years to get them cleaned back up. Only four rabbits. When we first started working this property, there were over forty rabbits living there. They had free-range chickens and turkeys and all sorts of things there as well. So we, takes time, but we work through it.
Where in town is that place?
That's on Sheila Street.
Yeah. So it takes a lot of patience and time, and, you know, we're just trying to always see progress with folks like this. And always trying to make, pick your own stuff forward and like we're excited with this. It takes time, and often with these chronic cases, especially, you know, if you're involved with the court. Most of our cases are replay driven. There's times when we're seeing obvious things that we just have to kind of take some action on. Here's an example of that. So like, we see a vehicle parked in front of the fire right there. What is the reaction on that? We see obstructions in the right way, or curve, or that's an error. We see like these clearly abandoned vehicles that aren't even operable, sitting down in the street. We see signs that are tacked on with other signs, public signs that are supposed to be used to strip from the state. We try to get contact if we can, if we think the owner of those signs are. That's the case. If you ever see some of our code service vehicles, you'll always see a bunch of signs in the back. Most of these cases, like these ones, they come in through our reporting, and so are our online sort of way that we intake cases. That's our preferred way to start our case management. This is again just some examples of some of the things that are there that's integrated. So now we're going to talk a little bit about how our folks interact with the houseless folks in our community. Our first, you know, effort is always to try to educate about resources and, you know, what may be made or mapping in violation of the hard codes. Codes not to issue citations, warnings, usually where the us, I'd say agents have been issued. In those cases, we're all their options. There's some photos of some of the houseless issues that we dealt with over the last year. Some of the codes that do have some that we work together with the houseless folks. At the full top, then, we're going to be homeless camps, established camps for these other issues where there's, they're clearly living in their vehicles. Now the parking. You can see there, we dealt with, that's one of our biggest sort of category of cases we deal with. This is just incorrect parking, whether it's an abandoned vehicle, whether it's a vehicle parked in the wrong way, whether it's vehicles that park for too long, parked in the wrong direction. Place. So we deal a lot with vehicles, whether it's just your standard automobile or light truck. Sometimes RVs, RVs are a little bit more challenging to deal with. These are some of the cars that we chose. This one is more kind of, they're, but this is literally full garbage. You know, so there's no way that that car can operate. Just use it as a store. You might have seen this white van around. This is kind of a case where we had to deal with an abandoned RV that could not easily be moved. And we had to show our effort with our public works folks. We were literally dismantled part of that vehicle so it didn't move because it wasn't, wasn't safe to be so. Don't remember what an RV looks like inside. There's some more, more shots of that. We had to actually add some reinforcement to the structure of this vehicle so that it could safely move without falling apart.
Can I ask a question? And maybe, maybe this would be better for Brian. I don't know, but about enforcement. You know, when you have to abate something at a house, obviously, you can put a lien on the house to recover your costs. How do you deal with enforcement, with, with someone who's really recalcitrant when it's something movable like this?
Sometimes we're successful and sometimes we're not. Especially on these RVs, it's not even being randomly able to personally. That's why we actually have to have the budget amount each year for some of these vehicles.
Kind of like a merchant who, merchant who automatically builds in a percentage of breakage and theft into their, yeah.
Pretty much. I mean, if it's a community value to not have vehicles like this out there that we have to invest, it's going to take to pay.
Can you remind us what you do with a vehicle that you cannot find the owner? Or the owner just says, I don't, I'm not going to have anything to do with this. I'm not going to pay for it. And then what happens?
Well, the owner, if we can find the owner of a record vote, they'll get, they'll get noticed. They'll have so many days to pick it up. And then especially in that one, the tow company may not have, they're moving that out of that thing. Because from our perspective, the code has been abated because the vehicle's along the same streets. So we essentially closed that case out between the owner and the tow company.
And then it's the, it's the towing company's problem after that.
Well, I don't know exactly how that works, but, you know, they're a business to make money too. And so there's a period of time where, you know, there's a plane, they close their vehicle and sell it.
Can we get charged more for something that looks like that?
Well, we actually, it's, it's been hit and miss with RVs because they're so unusual. Some RV companies or some tow companies will take that so long and just forget it. But we've been lucky this last year where we've given a tow company that isn't charging us a lot or willing to tow these. But there have been cases in the past where that wasn't available to us and they had to, to leave out the dollars and have a secret.
Yeah, right now, as Charlie said, we're very fortunate to have a company that doesn't charge us to tow RVs. That's pretty unique. When you look across the state, in fact, there was a bill that was introduced last legislative session to actually give money to cities for the towing of RVs. I don't, it didn't make it through the.
I think it's coming back.
Session. I assume it'll come back. Because again, these tow companies don't want to take them and cities can't afford to, you know, haul them all off. And so it's, it's a real problem. But right now, we have a vendor that's willing to take them and so, and not charge us.
They tend to go out of record there. They have to be built. Honestly, I don't know how it's that hard to enter. And I just know that they, they can't be taken down or right there. Because they can't melt them down and smash them like they do. A lot of hazardous materials inside these, installation, things that just chase the used. Next category is property maintenance. Here's an example that you can see here of the before and after this. This was a single-family residence that was in the former care. Yeah, this was one where the property owners live in the area. So again, this was, you know, again, initially this is abated. It really takes some time and effort and relationship building on behalf of the hard folks to get these things back. So one of the things our folks are really good at is being really diligent about taking, not attracting things. You know, like a little bit owners are operating and the tenants are, which is which. It's not always, it's not always easy with their, their area of property. So the technology has allowed us to, you know, really maintain database and contacts. They're, they're, they're pretty good. And honestly, for our two folks, they lead in Lexi. They've linked them with us since 2021, but to start off with, they're doing a great job. And their job just keeps changing, actually, getting honestly a lot more difficult. They have to deal with two kinds of, like this today, they have to go deal with homeless thing out under pedestrian. And in this weather, everything has. We actually had a discussion about whether or not they have the right PPE now. Because that wasn't something we ever thought about before, like what kind of PPE these guys need to have. So it's a safety of their deal. Unknown issues.
When, when a code services specialist is going to, especially an established camp, but, but really anywhere. Are they accompanied by law enforcement? Or how do we ensure their safety?
Well, they both have really good intuition and speaks smart. So if they feel like they need, you know, ask.
Okay.
Or sometimes it won't even be law enforcement, but they'll be listening to their work and probably see that they're right. They're, they're, they're pretty good about knowing when it's safe to be there. And they tend to do these, you know, these kinds of things as, as a team, so they're out there. Those are things like parking enforcement, so more often than not, they're out there as a team.
Does the city do anything to find out what the root causes are of this? I mean, obviously there are violations, but there's usually more deeper underlying issues with people.
Well, it's a good point, you know, and I, I will certainly think we could be to our advantage of that. But we don't, we haven't identified the resources right now to go into that kind of analytics. More of the projects though, kind of looking ahead a little bit for, for this division, is to use our GIFs capabilities to integrate in here a little bit better. See if we can better geographically identify what's our resources. So it comes down to, we need to be more strategic around how we deploy our resources. I'd like to see visually kind of where the problem areas are, so we can do this. But in terms of, it's more the psychographic part of it, geographic part of it. I just don't think we have resources right now, capabilities to answer some of those questions. Even though prevention is always more cost effective, but you got to invest at the beginning to get there. We're not quite there yet. All right. So that's it for code services. Moving on, we'll talk about planning. Again, as you can see, like a lot of, what I'm showing you now, code services, they have a planning. We're more reactive than we are proactive. So we're reacting to the community as they grow and change. We could just be proactive to a point, but we can't predict the future. We don't always know as they come down. So a lot of what you're going to see is planning is more about kind of what we do and our numbers and stats in terms of application and prevention, things like that. We really don't always know what the future holds, sort of things and projects. It's, you know, a fairly good idea, but not be able to do the same. So everything that's on this slide is probably, you know, no. You know, I think one of the areas we're trying to improve upon with our, with our planning is just making sure we have a better process. We're always working on our custom service and consider it to be a challenge to provide good service to the community. Being responsive to the community and the kind of. One of the things that I mentioned earlier that we have are these public bodies to appoint. This is one of them. We have a planning commission, obviously, probably one of the, along with the budget day. It's kind of one of the, the more important, if you will, the more impactful appointed bodies that might have here. These are our current, we're going to, sorry, I don't have a picture of them. There's a current lineup. You're going to see later on your agenda tonight, here's three of those seats that are open. So this, this lineup could actually change. That's, that's the group that we've had. There's seven folks on that, the interpretations, community staff, or community of homes. There's seven folks on that, different applications, community staff or community homes and things. This is again, just for information, you've been around, you've seen the same slide pretty much every year. These are the different types of applications, any process that we do. This is pretty standard stuff, four different types of application types and how they get to say it at a level, who makes the decision on that. So you'll, you'll never see the type ones, the twos. You'll always see the type fours and occasionally you might see the type twos, right?
Yeah, for the type twos, appeal, yeah.
Couldn't you, Ralph, just offhand, can you give an example of what would be a type four?
Type four is like what you're seeing with the developer code update, for example.
It's legislative. That's where you're, you're changing the line.
Oh, so it's not an application where an applicant is coming in asking for it?
You know, yeah, it's, in some cases it can be, but the standard type four is a legislative change to the developer code.
And you'll, you'll see, we'll see that this later this year with the local open.
Well, and a lot of the, well, a substantial number of those type fours go to the planning commission to get massaged before we see the final result.
Yes, and I mean, I don't know why we would ever not take.
That is part of the type four plan legislation.
Some of our stats from the past year, pretty, pretty basic here in terms of looking at past years. Nothing really stands out there. And then I think we discussed more diligent with our, really enforcing our zoning compliance review processes. With that number so high, we're asking that we didn't always, we're being very diligent with required. The overall numbers are pretty standard, pretty standard here. But yeah, kind of a more deeper dive in the statistics. Subdivisions are kind of our bigger brackets on this thing. So right now, you can see in the last three years, almost 400, you know, lots of subdivisions has been removed. And one application this year for 16 units. There's a few others in the queue though, and so I think you're going to see this number change a lot when you get these presentations for the next year. There's a number of multi-family developments that are doing it.
Just for those ones that are in review right now, aren't just 16 units, they're more of apartment style, is that correct?
I think that was, I think that was a little over.
No, coming up next year.
Oh, yeah, yes, yes, that's what I talked about, yeah, multi-family, like 200 unit projects, two of them. Yeah, there's two on James How I know that are in queue, just to, yeah. We got seven, CDC is working on, so there's a number of them that are in different stages.
We're going to need that reservoir.
Do you know where our occupancy rate is right now?
In our apartments? I don't, but I would imagine it's pretty close because there's not a lot.
Yeah, it's between a three and six month waiting list right now.
I know, you know, Chase likes his old story that he was on the waiting list to get an apartment. He's at, you know, it's pretty tough. So I think it was a big market abate for those. Onto the last section for tonight, which is the stock preservation element of the work we do. Again, and we have another advisory body that you have convened, three member advisory body. Part of the development code update that you're looking at right now, is in the process of the upcoming year process, is to actually expand the number of participants in this commission as well as provide an expiration date for their terms. Because strangely enough, right now, there's no expiration date for this, so they have no term limits. I think the proposal is to add two more.
With four year terms.
And right now, two of the three have to live in the city. So we may want to expand that.
You don't remember how we identified the two.
It was the city. Because two actually live in the city and one does not, so it works.
Yeah, the guy on the right lives in Bridgeport. Yeah.
So those are our three commission members. Suojin will be on there. Brian stepped in after Rich Walcott asked us. Onwards in this phase, these are all the different things that the commission does. This, these are, this is language right out of our home code. Basically, they're responsible for advising the planning commission, everything council and staff who have agreed on. Basically, they help cases store their, their primary focus for the last couple of years. They've been on the creation of this store. And that's kind of the big project. This is the, this is the final boundary of what the store system is going to build.
Looks very similar to the IRDAK boundary.
It's much smaller. IRDAK boundary was all the way across the country.
That's true, it does.
So it, it's, this is all within urban, rural district, but it's, it's a much smaller. And actually, this is a, this has been modified several times since its first iteration. And it's got smaller, it's not that concentrated. That makes for a stronger, stronger application. So this is the final recommendation for consultants that are using it. This is what's being applied for now. This has to go through the state and the national park district, parks, in order to be active as a national. Look my now, but my own status of this later this year.
What's the percentage that have to be contributing to qualify for the?
Yeah, I don't know that there's a percentage. There might be, I think it might be 50% or more, especially with the conservative.
Just wondering.
A lot of what dictates is, is aim around an era. There's a number of criteria that the commission, part of it is, is there inventory, a concentrated inventory of well-preserved structures that represent a certain era of the industry. And arguably, maybe not so arguably, I think. So we received a grant from the state to help us get through this process this last year. We hired a consultant, we selected a consultant, of course, a natural. If that's a lot of people we have, then you should do it. Public area communities or perhaps others, DDA is, you know, pretty involved as well, as well as. So this is exciting. You know, what it really will mean for Dallas initially is more of an asset to market. But that's kind of my, this, this is something that we can use to attract investment in our. It sets a standard of what, what we have and what we care about. Ultimately, it will be up to the landmark commission and planning commission in terms of, do they want to tack on, if you will, additional regulatory or designer new elements to maintain certain vision of our business? But that's, that's not required.
A lot of communities do do that, don't they?
That's very common, but that'll be a local decision. And once we get the district in place, we'll be having those issues. Yeah, it's got some funnel, funnel flows. Who was, who was around up here for this one? Who's brought the work before your time here, right?
You recognize it?
I'm sitting with the flagger man. You guys are funny.
But there we are, this one. So something you may remember on our kind of, we're in there with this year, we all stood up there, some of us did, as we directed these. Three new signs in our downtown, we talked a little bit about our history. This is kind of a joint project between the IRDAK and the landmark commission. Correct funding these signs. Kind of took a lot of time to finally get this project done, but I think they look really good.
They do, they, they really are attractive.
Really nice project. Over time, we may, we may do some, some more of this. We've been talking about maybe doing one over the Carnegie, for example, just to recognize that, that one. Oh, we can talk about zero, so this is, this is a, the dumb change we talked about a moment ago. So some of the future things, we talked about, I meant to mention Carnegie, but also there's a, there's a project that's been in the works to kick in around for years to recognize the first courthouse. There's a monument out there, there's a physical remnant of somewhere, I have a physical, I wish it was a little closer. Then adding some additional historic signage. That's it, so that's, that's part one. Helpless part two, we'll be in two weeks, I think we'll be meeting on another Tuesday night.
Any questions?
Thank you. So if I can take just a couple of minutes, I want to talk about something else.
You're good.
Good. So one of the topics I want to talk about just real fast is the council goal setting that we do on an annual basis. I was looking at kind of what the goals of the council has set. Looking at just scheduling a person to come out and help us do that facility, or facilitation that like we did last year. And I had the thought come across me of the council's goals, especially now and maybe the last couple of goal years that we've had, we're really setting kind of long-term goals. And so the thought for me was, would it make more sense, instead of hiring someone to come and facilitate a conversation, if we're, if we're like midway through our goals that we currently have, does that make sense? Or would it make more sense to just have staff do an update on our current goals? And then look at doing a facilitated goal setting session every two years after an election? So that way, we have new counselors that may be coming in, or at least counselors that were newly elected, plus the counselors that are still in office, to then do a goal setting session after the election on an every other year basis. And then we're not spending as much money annually, but also then have a check-in on the off-election years with your staff to say, here's where we are on the goals, here's the progress we made, these have been completed, these are still in process. And then the council could prioritize each year, whether through the facilitated discussion or the city staff update on what your priorities are moving forward for that year. Just wanted to get your feedback on that and some direction.
Would it be like a work session or?
So we would probably do a retreat style, whether it's the facilitated discussion or the staff-led discussion. So, you know, a Saturday morning type session like we've done in years past would just be, so like this year in 2024, we would have it with myself and the department heads coming in and talking about where we are, what we've done, what we have coming up, and any maybe hurdles that we see with the goals, you know, for that year.
I think a staff update makes a lot more sense, instead of spending money to have a facilitator come in and have an update.
Well, just to play devil's advocate, there is some, there's some real value in having an outside point of view. You know, the fresh blood, as it were, looking at, at issues that we're looking at from the viewpoint of somebody who isn't, you know, immersed in it all the time. And it's a trade-off, because she's right about the cost.
Yeah, and that's, and that's where I look at, you know, if we're just doing the update, I think that's something that staff could do. But when you're looking at, you know, setting new goals in that, in that, after an election year, goal setting session, and having someone that's not, you know, been kind of entrenched in the current goals, that makes a lot of sense. So that would be the facilitated discussion. Staff, what's the direction on what you want? Uh, it was between 200 and 300.
We used concrete last season.
We did, yeah, and, and they would be, they're much less expensive than using someone that's, that's their, you know, ball of wax. You know, you're spending.
They did a good job, too.
You're spending, you know, over $10,000 for one of those conversations.
Those guys did a good job.
I agree with Debbie. I, I can't imagine a situation where we are going to set some dramatically different goals from where we gave direction last year. And if we do that every other year, set those kind of big, big hairy audacious goals on a every two-year basis, that makes more sense.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with the idea of doing the grand one in odd-numbered years and the staff one in even-numbered years. That, that would work for me.
Side of the room work? Okay. All right, that's what we'll plan on doing then this year.
So just make sure that anything new pops up, you can get added to it.
Yes, yeah, and so, you know, during the staff update, if there's something that the council says, hey, by the way, we know we're not, you know, on a goal-setting year, but this is a priority for us to get done this year. Certainly that could be added. We will update the strategic plan each year, we just won't change the council's goals. And so we can certainly add, you know, a priority or an objective into the city's strategic plan on an annual basis.
Because every once in a while, money becomes available through certain, whatever. And we have a need for it, and it's not on our list, but it's, it will be on our list and so we can.
Yeah, ARCA is a great example of that, that kind of thing, just you can't predict it.
Yep, and we can still be flexible and all that. We're not going to say rigid to say, oh, we have this opportunity, but it's not in our plans, so we're not going to do it, right? We'll still take those opportunities as they come along. Well, so that's the next question, is, so with the staff update, we'll go ahead and do that this year. When would you like this to be?
Well, earlier is better as a broad principle, because you've got more of the year to work on what you just decided to do.
Okay, do you want to look at February? Anyone out of the country, your state, city? It's Saturdays in February?
February is going to be a busy month in more ways than one.
I just don't have a date.
That's right, well.
If you get the date before I get the date, I'll go to you instead of you.
Yeah, we'll try to, we'll try to target the, the 3rd or 10th. The 17th is going to be our 150th celebration for the community, so we won't do it that weekend. But yeah, 3rd or 10th. That's kind of what we'll shoot for. So let me know if you have conflicts, I'll send out a reminder. But that's what we'll look at. All right, that's my only other conversation.
That's it?
That's it. I didn't, I didn't need so much time after all.
You have nothing else to say?
Not right now.
Anything else, any questions?